You lost me.
Except, so here's to.
Two?
Yes.
That's why.
Okay.
Your elf chair.
You need a degree.
Seriously. I'm gonna move down to the old persons section.
You're gonna move where?
The old person section because I'm getting, I'm getting generalationalized, general.
You're doing that on your own.
Oh, sorry.
No, it's okay. There's a chair. Something.
Kind of ready.
What is, what is?
Thanks for coming.
Yep, yep, I checked and I saw those.
Go to all of them. Yeah, it was fun.
Yeah, I really enjoyed that style.
Yeah.
Yeah. Get in my, my small.
Matt Anderson, I just.
We're getting, we're getting like either, I can't quite see, but it looks like.
Allow.
It looks like we may be getting either the finger or a thumbs up. I'm not sure which.
Thumbs up.
I think you got two minutes.
We got two minutes ago.
That's good. It's good to get Matt.
From the two, the peace sign.
Did your chair all figured out?
Yeah.
Sports background. I need three.
So. Yes.
So.
Carrie.
I'm glad you did this.
Good move. Nice kill shot.
Just turn the lights on. Nap time. Nap time.
No, look at it. Get all that extra room.
Might be.
Oh, no. I know.
Stuff spinning.
I started like them there.
Yeah. And I'm at.
Do you want to sign right or anything?
Uh, it's a signature.
Signature looks good.
Sign twice, yeah. I just had Nancy on that, oh, she was misdirected. By default, don't we strongly support our own application?
Did I?
I'm just.
Which one?
It's either.
There's the center fuse one and the.
This is the low, no, and bus.
Yeah, actually, I thought I already signed the best one and sent it to Jesse.
I think.
Well, only because I was making comment that what would happen if he says we're kind of equivocating on our support.
No.
Go ahead and submit it anyway.
I, I think this is for information that we find.
I think, I think we decided to include all of them. I thought we have.
This is for a different pot of money. The transportation is not, but. Sure. I think so.
Hey, for six o'clock.
Yes.
Follow up with some of my grandmother.
Are we ready?
Yeah.
Um, so this is the study session of the Ellensburg City Council. It's Monday, April fourth, six o'clock, and we have Kristen Sackett to introduce local street issues.
Good evening, Council Mayor Kirsten Sackett, Community Development. Um, yeah, so as the mayor just introduced, I wanted to talk to you tonight about our street design standards. They're found in section fifteen four ten of the Ellensburg City Code. As many of you are aware, but not all of you, we adopted a code in 2013 that we still call the new land development code. We actually are still always to this day figuring out what parts are working the best and what we can refine. And this particular section of code talks about the requirements for street design when new subdivisions come into town. And I'll, I'll show you, I'll show you some attachments here in a minute, but basically we have received a request from a developer that has kind of spurred this particular conversation. I'll get into a little bit of more detail about what that request is, and I'm going to ask for a lot of questions you might have, and I think Rich wanted me to make this as exciting as possible in talking about streets, so.
Kind of like his emergency training.
His trainings are really good. He's got great examples. So, you know, I, I actually don't think I could live up to that, but. So I did let you guys know under previous council action, like whenever staff has identified challenge areas, we do try to present them to you after trying to find a solution to the problem. Um, and so today we're going to be talking about these different street design requirements, and I'm going to pull up the code and get to the right section before I share a screen. And I've decided to change it already when I hit hold up. So we're going to start with the actual section of code. So fifteen four ten is streetscape design. Share screen here. Okay. So with all sections of the code, we have a purpose, the reason we have these design requirements, and then we get into different, three different street types. We have the arterial collector and local access streets. And tonight I only really want to talk about the local access streets. But point of this section of code is it actually gives you a cross section of what your street design would look like. So here on the arterial, you're going to have a center lane, you have two travel lanes, a bike lane, a planting strip and a sidewalk. This is very different from the old code that did not include a planting strip. So as you drive around the old subdivisions, you'll, you'll just have the sidewalk right next to the street. I wasn't here at the time that this new code was developed, but some of you were, and there is a variety of reasons for wanting the planning, the planning strips. So there's a collector street design, then we go down to local. So with local access street design, we actually have three different types that are allowed. Twenty foot, twenty four foot and thirty foot wide streets. And it gives you the cross section. So with this twenty four foot wide street, that's including twenty feet of travel lane, planning strip and sidewalk. You've got a forty six inch or, well, what I should say not inch, you've got a variety of sizes based on the particular street and what the developer is going to propose and what they can fit in there. So I'm just showing you that really quickly to just explain to you what the difference is. And stop sharing for a second there. Now, when you look at the code, we actually have in there a section of that that talks about when new development is going to be proposed next to existing development. So there's one caveat that says when the sidewalks already exist on one abutting end only, you have to transition into the new sidewalk standards. And then there's a second caveat that when there's existing sidewalks on both sides of the new development, you can request a departure to just continue with the old street section. And we've seen that a few times throughout the city where there's just some infill development where a road was, you know, developed on both sides. So the request we received was from the developer of Sanders Mill, and I will share a screen as well on this. Okay, so just to kind of give you your bearings. I don't know how many of you are familiar. Hopefully you are in the small community. But this is the Sanders Mill subdivision, and this was plotted years and years ago. And when it was originally approved for preliminary plat, the developer turned in the civil plans for the entire subdivision. And then he developed it in phases, which is something that we do allow. There's a downturn in the economy and a lot of the subdivisions didn't get finished within the 10 year time period. And so he was able to get through at least phase eight, and then actually on the next page, it zoomed a little bit more. So this final phase, Greenfield Avenue and Dandy Lane was the final phase. And what he has remaining to be developed is this piece of property here. So if you go back up to the top, just kind of get your bearings, it says Alder Street. Got Sanders, you got the John, I'm sorry, Los De Cascades Trail. And then the Central Park Apartments right here. So just to give you your bearings. So, well, let's stay here. On these subdivisions, all of these streets that he's built out have the sidewalk right next to the curb. And you can see that a little bit more when you zoom in a little bit closer. And so he's actually come to the city a few times in the last several years requesting to be able to use the civil plans that were already designed, and he said they'd been through approval or the review process with Public Works three different times. They've been approved. And he would like the ability to finish up the plat the way that he had already designed and what he'd already paid for. The way the code has been interpreted and the way it is written, it would not be allowed. He'd have to transition into the new the new street sections. So that's the request that has come before us today. Now, I wanted to let you know that, well, let's actually go look at the code section itself. I'll just stop, sure, it's underneath. Oops. Okay, completely. All right. Well, let's just pull up the agenda packet again. It went sideways. I don't know where. It's so.
Any ideas here?
IT is coming. Awesome.
Help is on the way.
Not looking over your shoulder.
Why didn't spill the mouse?
That better.
Thank you. No, it's awesome.
Whatever it took. So, thank you.
To.
Okay, so what we're going to do is we're going to look at the, the code section itself. And I just wanted to share a plausible idea that staff came up with, and we just wanted to get feedback on this before we go too far down this path. Because if we do end up wanting to change the code, we'd have to do CIPA on it, take it to the planning commission and city council for all the code amendments that we always and use that normal process that we follow. Okay, so coming down to the local access street section, and I talked through this really briefly before. This is the part of the code where it says that when the curbs and sidewalks exist on one abutting end only, the new development shall transition from the existing location to the new street section. And then the second one is talking about when it's both abutting ends, what it says is that you can request a departure from the code streetscape requirements. This departure, if granted, will allow for the continuation of the existing roadway section across the proposed development. And so I had received a request from the mayor to give you guys all a copy of the departure criteria in the code, and that's all on, it's on the dais. And I also going to show it to you for the folks watching, just give you the definition up here. Well, first I'm going to start with the definitions, and so the departure.
Kirsten, do you want a screen share?
Yeah. All right. So a departure means an alternative way to meet specific design standards set forth in this title. Pretty generic. It's not a, it's not a variance, which is something that is a deviation that you need to take to the hearing examiner for approval. So that's what a departure is. And then if you go to fifteen two ten oh six oh, that's also part of what's on the dais there for you. And honestly, there's not a whole lot to this. It's just the, these A through F criteria right here tells you the overview and purpose. Talk here gets to provide applicants with an option of proposing an alternative design treatment. It also states that departures are voluntary. And that also that they're available only to the specific standards that allow for departure. So if you're going through the code and it doesn't mention departure, it's just not an option available to you. We do get developers asking us that sometimes. The section of code we just looked at, it does talk about departures already in that section of code. Procedures, it goes through a type two permit, and we actually do send out notice to people within three hundred feet, but it's something we would have do administratively. It doesn't go before any sort of a hearing. And then the approval criteria is somewhat narrow here. It, the project applicants must successfully demonstrate to the decision maker how the proposed departure meets the purposes of the standard and other applicable departure criteria that applies to the specific standard. And then we just have to document how we arrived at a decision. So that goes through my department on some of them, but in this section of code fifteen four ten, that is a departure would be determined by the public works and utilities director is where the code reads there. So what we do is if, let's just go to four ten here real quick, we would ask the developer to tell us how they meet the purpose statement. So there's a purpose statement for this entire chapter of code. And then when you go to each of the different types, arterial collector and local, it also provides a purpose statement. And then here it's just like one a couple of sentences about it, and it's usually about just providing functionality and let's go down to the local one, just so you can see what that would be. Pretty basic. It's to provide safe and attractive local access streets that provide access to the property. So what we're looking at doing is if you guys wanted to go down the path of you know, considering this, we would recommend that we might consider some additional criteria be considered. So what we wrote in here, so this isn't track changes, it's just some quick language that kind of followed the language below it. The project applicant may petition the public works and utilities director for a departure from the code streetscape improvements. This departure, if granted, would allow for the continuation of the existing roadway section into future phases of a development. The applicant must define the boundaries of the development proposed for exclusion from the new streetscape requirements and comply with the departure criteria. Kind of minimal in this case. You could add something about the timing that, you know, for subdivisions approved prior to 2013, or you could add some additional caveats if that is something you actually did want to pursue. Now, in order to frame the conversation, I did want to show you some examples of how this has kind of been applied over time. And so to begin, I'm just going to quickly show you some areas of town, and most, most of this is north. Thanks, Terry. All right, so this is our GIS map in the city limits. And there's areas of town that just, you know, like a development stopped at a certain area. So for example, here's Water Street, you have, you have Bender up to the north, but Greenfield Avenue here. This is a street that does have a connector over here, and we do have a subdivision being proposed for this. It's Ridgeview subdivision, division three. And they will have a street that's going to end up connecting over here. And so this is one where somebody could request that you could just continue on because you've got the sidewalks abutting the street here and over here. We have another one that I showed you an example in your packets where we actually have a situation where both is occurring. So this has been Benjamin's lane. So this is Benjamin's corner plat. And so this is the new subdivision right here. So on this street, there is room for the planner strip. But this development also included the construction of this sidewalk right here that just continued with the old subdivision or sidewalk style. And the same will likely occur right here and also up here when that gets developed because the sidewalks already constructed out. There's a few other areas in town where we're going to see that happen, and like I said, mostly on this end of town. Here's Greenfield. There's a small section of road right here that never got finished out. You know, one day if this were to continue through, they could potentially request that as well. Here's another one, Idaho Avenue that stops here. That's a whole different thing. Part of, there's a half street improvement right here that does have the new section, and as it continued on, we'd have to have, you know, they would make an argument either way to the public works and utilities director, but this one over here did not connect to anything. So it has the new landscape strip in there. And then, as we all know, we've got Helena being constructed right now, but this one, it does include planter strips. And it's something that the city itself is putting in, and but it's also got the bus stop, and so there's a variety of other reasons to do that a little bit differently. So the way the code's written, it gives an opportunity to the city staff to analyze kind of what the best scenario scenario is for that particular development. Now, I know another question is going to be like, well, are other subdivisions going to come and make the same request? So I'm going to share a, a map that we've started developing. It's not quite ready to be shared with folks yet, but. So this is a plat tracker map, and it's just kind of being used for staff right now. We're going to be adding more to it, but I wanted to share this because it actually kind of illustrates, you know, the very questions you're going to be having. So this is the north end of town. You got Bender Road right here, and you've got Water Street right here. This in yellow is the Habitat for Humanity proposal. And that one, I believe, I forgot to ask about it, but I believe it's going to have a new street cross section. This Ellensburg Flats right here, this has forty lots in here, and they have already submitted their designs with the planner strip in there. And so they've already also been approved. So I don't see that they'd be asking to change them back after spending all that money on the design work. Right here is the Rolling Meadows plat. There's forty nine lots in here. I believe they're in mid process of developing the plans. You know, if this was adopted, it's possible you might want to revert back to it, but at the same time, it's not connecting to any other streets of any other subdivisions. So it, there wouldn't really be a rationale for connecting to something else. We also have this one right here, which is that Ridgeview when I talked about, and down here is Greenfield where we're going to need to connect. They've already, they have one street, long street going up through here. The, that's already been approved as well with the civils. Now, right next to it is Katy Meadows subdivision, forty nine lots. It's been to the hearing examiner. And the, the way they developed it was going to be with the new street standards. You know, I don't know if they would also want to revert back. I think they're in the mid process of developing the civils. But these are things you'd have to analyze on a case by case basis. This one over here is called Blackmore subdivision. I failed to get information about this, but just to give you a perspective, it is, this is what we were just looking at where the new street design was put into here, and then this was kept with the old subdivision sidewalks right here. I'm not really certain honestly what's going on in here. It might be another one that's short platted in a way that I don't know if you're aware that over here you, you come in and there's just a shared driveway for these four lots, and then these four lots have a shared driveway from here. To meet something similar. And then continuing on, this one is not included on this map. It's a newer subdivision. But right here, we have a twelve lot subdivision. So if this is a corner of Bender and Airport, so the southwest corner. They have not turned in civils there, but it's also not connecting to any existing subdivision, so it wouldn't make sense to allow for the, the reverting back. Here's another one. This is the Lyle Creek subdivision. This is a hundred and eight lots. This is Fanning Road. This is Vantage Highway and Judge Ronald Road right here. And this was, the preliminary plat only has been approved. And they have had their civil plans already submitted with the new standards and approved. We don't know when they're going to be coming in for final, but they're, they're planning to do it in phases. But that's been sitting out there for a couple of years. Then over by the, the elementary school schools, we have off of Dry Creek Road, this is the Foster subdivision, a hundred and forty one lots, and they are also in mid process. They've had the preliminary plat approved. Don't know if they would want to go backwards, but once again, it's not connecting to any city subdivisions where it would be a re, there'd be a reason to tie into the old street design standards. We have a couple little ones that are just short plats and wouldn't actually be affected by this. And then we have the Mallard Meadow subdivision that was very, very recently approved by council. It's two hundred and thirty nine lots. They're planning to do it in phases. It also does not connect to any city subdivisions. And just north of it right here is a county subdivision, so that's in the UGA, and they're completely separated by topography, and there would be nothing to connect to. So just to kind of give you an understanding, and this one is just a short plat. That wouldn't be affected by it. They're just dividing into a couple lots, so. Those are just some subdivisions we have out there just to kind of help you frame the conversation. You know, if you're going to be potentially making changes to the code to allow for the Sanders Mill one to continue with what they had gotten approved in years ago. Of course, you want to look at whether or not other subdivisions would be making the same request. So that's just some lot of information to share, share with you, throw at you. And then if you, oh, let me actually, I did want to show one more thing. We also, we did talk about, so we actually took to the planning commission as well, and there was just a variety of opinions on it. Some of them liked the idea of keeping the planner strips required all around. Some didn't, and it didn't really. It wasn't really anything that made much of a difference in here, but we did have a conversation about whether or not to keep the twenty foot streets, and they, they really didn't want to necessarily get rid of the idea of it. And the twenty foot street sections, we have one of them in town. It's where you've got two travel lanes, planning strip and a sidewalk. And we've had one go in, and it's really tight. You can't allow parking on the street, but it also dead ends. And so the planning commission is like, you know, why, why eliminate options? Let's just look at them on a case by case basis. And what they would like to do is and what staff would like to do is to change the code to, if we're going to continue on with the twenty foot streets, have a requirement that in order, that it needs to meet the fire code requirements. I don't, maybe Rich knows this, but a certain number of feet, we would want to have a bulb out for that's where it's twenty six feet wide for the fire apparatus to fit on the street. If the road is, you know, if it's only, you know, say it was eighty foot long, I don't think that would be necessary. But Rich, do you actually know the distance?
Yeah, if it's, if it's long enough to require hydrants, there has to be cutouts where the hydrant goes to twenty six feet, and if it's an aerial access road, so depending on the height of the structure, it has to go to twenty six feet over the twenty.
So what we, what I wrote in here, if we're going to change this part of the code, we wanted to throw in a couple more things, and so limitations for the twenty foot streets, we added that use of the street type shall only be permitted when in compliance with the fire code. Twenty foot wide traveling will be required to be increased twenty six feet when the block length exceeds the fire code limitations. Wanted to add that language, and then we would need to also, we have a twenty four foot wide street section that we would propose. We just changed this whole thing to twenty six foot wide and widen it to not have that be a conflict in the future. So that's the conversation, and I just want to take feedback, have questions. There are questions for Kristen?
I guess I had a question. So I can appreciate the sort of the maybe the genesis of this origination. So we had a plat that was approved years ago, was built in phases. I get that. So we're at phase nine, and so the time limitation that's assigned to the approval of plat, was that a, was it six years, ten years, or something like that, right?
Five years, and you can request a five year extension, but at the time, I think it's when the state had changed it to ten years.
Or changed, yeah. Okay, so it's a state. That was my next question, is the time limit defined by state statute or local? And it sounds like it's a state.
Yeah.
GMA kind of thing.
Yeah, that is state, yeah.
Okay, so, okay. So I guess in terms of the application beyond this one example. The proposed departure in this example is related to the expiration of time, if you will, we'll say. But if somebody gets a subdivision approved where the plat, the original plat hasn't expired, would we, would we, it seems to me at that, if this was on the books, they would perhaps pursue the departure before they submitted the platter. But I'm thinking after the fact, this is after the fact. So how do you see that complicated things, if at all?
Well, that's why we tried to look at what subdivisions are in the queue right now, and we don't have any subdivisions hanging out there from the old code that haven't been constructed to the point where they want to revert back. But we do have newer subdivisions that I showed you on the plat tracker map that. But we do have newer subdivisions that I showed you on the plat tracker map that. There might be interest, you know, if they haven't done any construction, but that would be a decision about money. And also if you made the criteria. To where it needed, absolutely had to. Adjacent to existing subdivisions, that would eliminate a couple of them. We could add more caveats to it if it's something you want to pursue, but we. We wanted to get some general direction first.
Yeah, so just refreshing my brain, I guess, was there the rationale for the, there was a rationale for the planning strips, wasn't. I mean, with all due respect to the subdivision that didn't or the. Stays that didn't get built.
Since it was our community and and Mr. Willard was on the committee and. So the. The idea was. Primarily a buffer between pedestrian and active travel. So that, you know, there's, there's a safety issue, but there was, there's also. The. We made it so that there could be snow storage. And so, so the the plows would would have a place to put it that wasn't on the sidewalk, which can be a problem. And the the other was. The. Well, there's. Now there's a stormwater that they've been used a lot for stormwater, but the original intent was that that it would be street trees. And those aren't compatible, right?
Yeah, we've lost a few trees. It's challenging to irrigate and then when you use it for stormwater and snow storage.
And I don't want to speak for Mr. Willard, but he argued people like to step out onto the sidewalk and not onto grass or snow. And and that. That it's easier to irrigate street trees when they're adjacent to the lot and not across the sidewalk. And so Sanders Mill is that way. And I guess that was a question I had. For Mr. Willard in the in the the section that's not built. Is that all locals, your local streets don't have street trees? Or or do they? They all do, okay. Would I I would invite you, do you have any comment on the discussion?
So with regard to Sanders Mill. We're done. We we have no more lots. We had preliminary plat approval for. Other phases that preliminary plat has lapsed. So we have approved civil engineering. For those plats that has been reviewed and approved three times by Public Works. To the old standard at the time of the adoption of the new standard. I could foresee this situation coming of the expiration of the plat. I petitioned the then mayor. And. You had a huge job adopting the land use code and the mayor then said. We we have to move forward. We have to adopt this. We can amend it. I submitted a code amendment. Couple of years ago, it didn't make it to dock it. And and so this is kind of. Coming up again. So even for us, we would have to submit preliminary plat. If there was a. A. Deviation.
Departure.
Departure. We would petition. Council and staff to have that departure apply to us. For the reason that we've done all the civil engineering over and over. But it would have to meet whatever criterion was in the departure and there would have to be a new preliminary plat approval. So there's not. There's no vesting. We'd have to start over. We would just like a departure to apply so we could finish. Is is all. And the only other thing, the importance of what staff is trying to do here. The state legislature passed a house bill two years ago. It didn't deal with annexed properties in the city. It had everything to do with urban growth areas. And what they found is that the urban growth areas in most municipalities weren't working. And it's really because of conflicts between county code and city code. And it's the reason that you're doing the interlocal agreement, which should have been done ten years ago.
We tried for twenty.
I I know, I know you tried and I'm working with your staff to try and make this happen and work. But one of the things they found is that in crafting the rules in the urban growth area between county and city. Most counties and cities failed to adopt rules that were workable. And one of the things they did in the house bill they adopted two years ago, I'm almost done because I've. Have a timeline that but they. They approved. Avoiding and accepting SEPA. In the UGA for land use actions because SEPA was being used to thwart infill. And it was, it wasn't just one city, it was most cities. So there's legislative support at the state level. For correcting these kinds of problems so that things work.
So my question was. In. In your, in Sanders Mill and in the what what has been designed and you have the Civils for. Is the street section. The travel lane, a parking lane, sidewalk, and then street trees?
Yes.
On, is there collectors and local streets?
They're all local streets.
They're all local.
Yeah, we have no more art. No, we have no more collectors.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
It feels like I I'm a little adrift because it feels like we've got very specific. While the conversation that I think a part of what Kirsten presented was the broader policy direction within the plats. And I think we need to be a little sensitive to drilling down. In in a study session to an individual.
We're taking.
The the question, the the other question though, because I think. Is the request for directions solely for the. Which level of the streets?
For local access only.
For the local, right.
Which is generally within your residential subdivisions only.
Just for for new council members. The reason I asked that question is, as somebody rides a bike on Dollar Way. It it's interesting. At best, because that was actually. Designed before we had the conversation about caving strips. And so if you're a pedestrian out on that particular area, you're. Really close to fast moving traffic. And if you're in the bike lane, it's.
Well, so. Dollar Way and I think maybe some of the others, if we have existing right of way, sometimes there's not room. Isn't isn't that? Correct for to have all of.
I mean, that would be a consideration no matter what we're going to do, right? So, so, yeah, I mean, right away is. But.
I mean, sometimes you have to forego.
What I'm making is if you look at the design that that's been brought forward for university way and the new entry on both sides. And you look at what what occurred on Dollar Way, it's radically different.
This proposal was just for local streets.
Yeah, so it's just, yeah, so I just want to, yeah, I just need to.
So I guess I want to offer that I I appreciate. That. I guess the motivating factor for me is Civils are done and I don't necessarily want to cause someone to have to redo that and go to that expense. So I guess I would prefer an extra caveat that it would for subdivisions that were approved before. Twenty thirteen, as you suggested.
You know, after having said that earlier, I mean, as Steve pointed out, it's not actually. Anymore. You'd have to start over with a new preliminary plat, so.
I wonder about the date though. I'm not sure because there undoubtedly would be subdivisions that were planted and proved after twenty thirteen that haven't been built yet. And they may also expect. So it could be twenty fourteen, fifteen. Not sure a date works hard as a guy.
So so I I guess, you know, it's not the specific project. I'm supportive of. The process being there and I'd like to have a, you know, a conversation where we're actually debating, you know, approval. Or or lack thereof. And so I mean, in a in a study session, obviously, we're not saying yes to this project. We're not saying yes to. To to this concept. I like the concept of having the departure available. In this particular case. Not site specific, but this context, I like that departure option available.
I agree with that.
And so I guess my 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 feedback, because you're what you're looking for is, is it worth putting time and effort into bringing this back to us? I'm saying. I'd like to look at it. And have that conversation.
And I would emphasize the departure idea. I mean, I I really, we have been. We've had conversations about the potential liability of vesting. I appreciate you using that framework and at a date, I think potentially implies vesting.
I see.
So we may want to be sensitive to that. A a departure is that it's general.
What what I guess.
Or I would, I would suggest that the departure address that general. Framework rather than attempt to.
To me, there's not enough caveats. There's not enough, I mean, the departure is loose enough that I feel like. It it could potentially. Undermine the intent of the 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 code if it is used too frequently and. So I I'm I'm looking for something to to make it more narrowly defined.
Yeah, and.
So I think you offered the that option with the the connectivity to subdivisions. You know, the isolated development. Doesn't really have that, you know, connectivity when it's. Part of or adjacent to multiple subdivisions where that fits, that to me feels like a caveat that would make that. Restricted enough that it doesn't, you know, sort of subvert the intent of the code.
Just along the same line, if there was a proposed subdivision that fronted an existing arterial or collector that didn't have. Fully built out half street improvements, there really isn't a path for departure on that to get out from under that requirement. But we wouldn't end up in that situation.
Yeah, it'd probably be a transition. Thing they'd work with public works to.
And I also thought I appreciated the the examples. The, I don't know it was Brooklyn, I don't know which one it was, but the one with your budding, but where it came around the corner. But then as it came around the corner, it phased into the the new standard. It was really helpful for me because part of what I was grappling with was the aesthetic of it, you know, what, not just the cost, but. You know, how is it going to look in a neighborhood? And I felt like that was that helped.
Yeah.
I mean, it comes in.
Yeah, it is the the old sidewalk standards and then it phased in.
Yeah, it comes around, but then there's a planning strip on the move.
And then, as we talked earlier, like this will, I'm certain, continue with just to match up. You can see a little bit of the sidewalk right there.
So I think I heard consensus that we would like you to pursue this. And is there any? Anything further?
But I just have.
Direction.
One, not direction, but clarification, the process, the SEPA planning commission council process, is it possible? Is this a, is this going to be driven by projects or is this something that? That SEPA to specific to the code change, which then would be a blanket SEPA effectively? Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, and I would see this probably being a solo. Project, or well, when I say project. Code amendment. They're all a lot of work and sometimes we do try to package several things together. I'm not really aware of.
Well, there wouldn't be, there wouldn't be a SEPA required project specific to the departure. There might be a SEPA for the project itself, obviously, but. But I think what Kirsten's talking about is we would be taking the code change through planning commission and then SEPA.
Right, right, yeah.
Yeah, and and then departures themselves, you know, if this was approved and somebody asked for departure. They would submit their request to the city. We'd do the notification and they make a determination.
Yeah, no, I get that. And Mr. Willard mentioned an attempt a couple of years ago to dock a complaint amendment, which didn't.
He had submitted.
Go away, does it, does that move with?
He had submitted a request to us. It wasn't actually submitted as like a comp plan docket item. It was, he had proposed simply a code amendment. That we analyzed and determined it had to do with vesting and there was just some challenges associated with it. So it never came to you guys.
No, no, that's fine. I think docketing.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Just just one quick clarifying question. So if we don't end up bringing this back and and adjusting this. For that continuation of the plat in the top right corner, go back down. In the top right corner, there's where. There's another division going in up there. You were talking about the sidewalk continuing through.
Yeah, this sidewalk, I have no doubt will just continue as is for that.
Even with or without this.
Yeah, because the way the code is written, it already has a second one where it's a budding on both sides. It's required or it's allowed to be. Through departure.
No, and this is, I think you're good, we've got direction. The other piece you talked about was emergency.
The twenty. Yeah, let's see.
As as well as the.
Twenty six.
Changing from a twenty four to twenty six.
If if that's acceptable, you know, I can relate staff would make a new diagram. We change the widths on there. And then, you know, we could work with the fire district if they want to refine this language anymore about the. When it's allowed to use a twenty foot that they do have. Certain sections that go to the twenty six.
So you've got a diagram that the cross section of the twenty foot on. In the code right now. Figure fifteen or whatever is fifteen, four, ten, oh, four, oh. You're saying we would add, replace this or just add a second because we're still at a twenty foot street, right?
Yeah, so the addition, so the twenty foot is just discussed on, so it's fifteen, four, ten, oh, four, oh. See, design and then two. So there's a limitation for twenty foot streets that's already described. It says it's intended to only be used in special cases. And then we wanted to add in this a little bit additional language. The the one that we do have, I mean, this picture's pretty, it's neat, but there was additional right of way to add for these like green strips and some pullout spaces for. Parking, but the one we do have, it's just twenty foot straight. There's zero extra room whatsoever. And there is a hammerhead at the end for the. Fire apparatus, but it's it's a tight, it's a tight fit in there.
I was going to ask about that. Is that hammerhead is that's not specified in code? We don't have a turnaround requirement for emergency vehicle access.
Appendix D of the fire code has very specific turnaround standards for roads and there's three or four different designs that you can do it. There's a. There's a hammerhead and and such and it's 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 spelled out in appendix D, which the city of Ellensburg has chosen to adopt as part of the code each three years.
Right, so that will be picked up by reference always. There would not be a twenty foot wide street without a turnaround.
Yeah, but now that we've allowed one, we've kind of got a better handle on what what works and what doesn't. And so we want to like put in a little bit more language to. Ensure that.
Keep in mind, I said that the whole, the whole idea was to skinny down the streets and the and and. Width equals speed. So anytime you can. It it looks wide. So like if there aren't cars parked on a thirty foot wide street, it looks. Really wide, like you could go fast if there's not anything there for you. So the. For a local street, I mean, people want quiet. Slow moving traffic residential. So the whole idea is that you have to queue up. You have, you you don't just pass each other without. If there's cars parked on these streets, you kind of have to wait for the. The other car to pass, but if there's not cars passed, you fly by each other. So. So on the twenty four foot wide, it's parking on one side only. And. If I remember right, it's ten, ten, a travel lane is ten feet wide, a parking. And if I remember right, it's ten, ten, a travel lane is ten feet wide, a parking lane is seven feet wide, anyway. If we add the two feet potentially we're getting a little faster, we're getting, but it's fire code. And if we didn't go with twenty six, we would end up having to add the bulb out after a certain number of feet, you're going to have to have someplace for the fire truck to park, right? I mean, that, that would be the
Yeah, correct. And I was going to show you the example of, this was an info lot, you know, I think that's what the twenty foot was designed for, but we had this really narrow lot that kept trying to be developed.
Yeah, and, and Ellington is the example of the, how not to build a local street because it is as wide as our collectors are now.
Yeah, okay, so, since you pointed out, here's Ellington. And there's actually.
Has the gate been moved?
Now, there, there's a gate there, I was gonna, I wasn't gonna bring that up, but yep, there's a gate, I think there was people speeding through there, as you pointed out, but I wasn't here. So anyway, let's get to this one, this, this was a lot that was an info lot, it was pretty narrow. And so the twenty foot wide road was used and they do have a hammerhead in here. And at the time, I know that there was conversation about not wanting it to be a speed lane, so that's why the developer put two houses fronting Greenfield. But in all honesty, it might have been better for the fire department to just have it go straight through. But this is what it is and it's providing more housing, but we've learned, you know, how to better refine the requirements in the code. Like we learned how to maybe do it better.
And, and the problem is, is that if somebody has a house, they feel like they can park in front of it, regardless of what you do. And there's no way that code enforcement can keep people from parking on those streets. It just doesn't happen.
Yeah.
Consistently.
But if it had pullouts or bulb outs, you know, and
And there just wasn't room for that.
Man, if you zoom in on the lowest lot closest to the bottom. There's a car parked right in the, red car right there.
Oh, right on this sidewalk.
See, there you go.
Yeah.
There's some, well, that made me just really get worried because they're straddling the parking strip and
And the developer did try to make room and you can see for three cars wide and it's a two car garage. Just knowing how it is here, there's always lots of cars and so, you know, pretend you know, it's quite, quite the maneuvering thing, if you got two cars in there and you got to move them all around to get them out. Maybe the garage is used for parking, maybe not, but he was trying to offer more options. But it is what it is, you know, so it's just tight and maybe not the best scenario for fire code purposes.
So is that dark strip? Jason, is that a planning strip?
This, this is the planning strip.
Gutter, concrete gutter plan for.
Yeah, so this is the sidewalk. And planning strip and then
So what is the percentage now, I mean, so we require a five foot planting strip and, and are most of those, they're ending up to be rock swells for stormwater and they're not street trees, is that?
Yeah.
What's the percentage, do, do we get street trees ever or?
We did in the beginning, but they all died and it literally, this is a conversation that could be a huge one for future study sessions about if you want to look at you know, the purpose again of the strips, you know, are they just going to be swells for stormwater because Public Works does like them for the snow. There's challenges on the other hand, when, you know, say it has snowed and you park next to them and the person getting out of the passenger side door might land in a swell, so I mean, there's pros and cons to this and this is not purpose of tonight's discussion, be a big one in the future. But let's just work with what we've got in the code right now.
So the, I just need a little clarification too on the Archer statement that, that you're recommending or that you want to work on, that, is that only apply to local streets?
Only the local.
Is that what council is looking at or all the different types of streets? Just, just local, okay.
I, I mean, the planting strip is more important on the arterials.
Yeah, where you have
And even collectors than on the local.
I mean, that's one thing, it typically hopefully have lower speeds in the residential subdivisions and you know, depending on the design, often it can feel like a safe, walkable neighborhood, right?
Yeah, and at some point, maybe the conversation for another time from planning strips may be that they're not really appropriate for local streets at all.
Or maybe don't call it that, call it what it is.
I think it's the piece of what we were attempting to accomplish, right, if planning strips aren't accomplishing but the intent with a narrower street and the planting strip was to create a more pedestrian friendly neighborhood with, with different types of design features, which Steve commented on. You'll loathe those many years ago. But, but, but the intent was, to your point Nancy, was to keep people from coming down streets where there could be families at forty miles an hour. You know, if, if as a field, that conversation has progressed differently. If there are different ideas out there that accomplish that same aim, then I think that's where our conversation needs to be. Doesn't need to be a planting strip per se or a swell per sweat. It, it was, how do we retain the integrity of a neighborhood that supports it to be pedestrian friendly and build a sense of community, which, which in all honesty, you know, the feedback that I've had from folks that live in Sanders Mill, you know, between what, how that came together and the park has created that sense. That's what we were hoping to accomplish, you know.
Yeah, and when, you know, just for your own notification, at some point you can read the purpose statement of the street scape design standard is those very things that you're just talking about, appearance, character, impressions they evoke how you design the streets, so.
Okay, so we have time for a short break before our meeting at seven.
Actually, it's relative to what we normally have, it's a long break.
Well, true.